Train.
Oh, we are, it's number two.
Welcome to the Town of Acton Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, April 14th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. I'll stand for the pledge, please.
(inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic, where we change our mission on our invisible liberty and justice for all.
We don't have minutes ready, so.
Not for this.
No minutes?
No, I didn't do minutes today because I wasn't, uh, no.
All right.
Definitely late to get a copy of those minutes, so I can read them over really well.
The ones from last week?
Yeah, because they're probably going to be.
I haven't even got, those haven't come across my desk yet.
Probably going to be scrutinized more than other minutes that we produce.
Uh, new business.
I make a motion that we move into the executive session pursuant to MRS A4056-.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I make a motion that we come out of the executive session pursuant to MRS A4056-.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Now.
Now someone has to make a motion to.
To rescind.
I make a motion we rescind the decision.
You weren't at the meeting, John.
Oh, yeah, so I guess.
It's up to you.
Okay, I make a motion that we rescind the decision made on Seth McCoy's application.
April 7th.
April 7th.
Conditional.
Conditional use.
Conditional use.
On April 7th. Meeting of Planning Board.
Any second?
Yeah.
All in favor? All opposed?
No, what am I supposed to do? I'm opposed, I'm opposed to it, I guess.
Okay.
I was on this, so I guess.
Thank you.
Can't abstain.
Well, you could.
I don't think I can abstain.
No.
No, I can't, as much as you wanted to.
Okay.
All right, uh, next we're going to head into Planning Board Workshop hosted by Southern Maine Regional Planning and Development Commission. Yeah, now we can.
Everybody, this is Lee J. Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission?
Yes.
Uh, he is here to do a workshop with the planning board on, um, some good stuff. I'll let him describe, you know, he's going to help us with decision making, reviewing applications, um, review of procedures, uh, for my, for, uh, for myself as well as for the planning board.
Would you like to have podium up here or table down?
Sure, that would be great.
Make you comfortable, you can have a table?
It'd be nicer with a table, probably.
I'll get a mic for him.
Okay, thank you.
That one over there, I guess.
Yeah.
Why get a table?
Bring the squeeze and give them.
Yeah, you can sit down.
Hey, do you want to shift this way?
Yeah.
Yeah, have him sit here.
Why don't you come up here?
Oh, great, okay, thank you.
Somebody needs to down there, I don't know.
Everybody go, let me guess.
That's yours.
All the extras right here.
All right, well, thank you for having me, uh, come up. Uh, I think the last time I was here, a number of years ago, when the board actually met downstairs on the other side, so it's been a while. Um, so, a little bit about us, I don't know how much you know, but Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission is a, um, public nonprofit agency. Um, we have 39 member communities, of which you are one, paying dues on a yearly basis to, to our organization, uh, as well as, excuse me, every other community in York County, and we also service Southern Oxford County. Um, I say southern, we go all the way up to Sweden and Stowe area, but we stay to the, to the westerly side of that. Um, we don't service Bridgeton, um, they're another, uh, organization's agency, um, but we do service one community in Bal, in Cumberland County, Baldwin. Um, and what we do is, um, provide planning services in the way of ordinance work, development review, uh, recommendations or assisting planning boards with planning board process and procedures like we're going to talk about tonight. Um, we also, um, have an, and part of our organization deals with transportation issues, both in the rural area as well as in some of the urbanized areas further south. Uh, we also have a brownfields, um, group who deals with, um, environmental, um, brownfields issues, um, relevant to, um, helping, assisting cleaning up, uh, the mills. Um, we've done a lot of work in the, in Sanford, we've done a lot of work in, um, Biddeford and Saco, um, providing assistance to developers, uh, through loans and grants to, uh, to clean those mills up. We also have a sustainability and resiliency group who is fairly new, um, working on, um, energy issues, greenhouse gas emissions issues for the region, uh, working on sea level rise down in the coastal area. So we have a, a full gamut of planning issues and responsibilities. Uh, relevant to the planning board work, like, um, like we're doing here, there's myself, and then I have a contract planner that, uh, works with us, who serves, um, four communities for us, and then another, um, part-time planner who is also part-time transportation within our office, and he services two more communities, so, on a regular basis. So, um, we're all over the region, um, and this is what we do, and one of the things that by us doing that, uh, we can do for, for other communities is say, hey, this is what's happening in, in Acton, uh, we think this is a really good thing, you ought to want to consider changing your ordinances to do this. Um, so we act as, as a, uh, consultant to, uh, to and from all of the communities around here. Um, Jason asked me to come tonight to talk to you about, um, just doing some training and helping you get up to speed, I guess some of you are fairly new, um, and talking about, excuse me, talking about, um, your ordinances and how you need to look at things. What I passed out tonight, there's a lot of generic stuff in here, but it is germane to you folks, and I'm not going to bore you and go through all of that, but it's certainly some reading and some aha moments for you as well. Um, one of the things that I thought I heard someone talking about early on, um, this will be really helpful to you, is a cheat sheet at the very back, and that cheat sheet is how to make certain motions and when to use them, and, um, when a vote is needed, and, uh, what's debatable and what isn't debatable, so, uh, it's, it's good to have that. You know, one of the, one of the ones that, um, everybody, anybody and everybody always gets wrong, um, is tabling versus postponing. There is a difference between a tabling and a postponing, and there's a little, uh, description at the bottom that, um, tells you when to table and when to postpone. Um, so anyway, um, this is for your reading pleasure when, uh, when you, you want to take a look at stuff, uh, unless you want me to go through any of it, you know, I can do that as well. Um, some of the things relevant to your ordinance that, um, and I know questions will come up, and please don't hesitate to jump right in on me and, and say, well, what about this? Um, ask the questions, and if we leave tonight and you've got more questions, um, I think we've scheduled a second meeting where I can come back and, and we can talk about more stuff if we don't get everything covered tonight. Um, so I've put up a bunch of, I've read through your ordinance, and I've put a bunch of tabs here for various issues, um, to look at and consider, so, um, you know, if we want, we can, we can walk through that. Excuse me. So, the first thing that, that, um, I tabbed, because I think, you know, it's important to your whole process, is, um, whether it's conditional use issues, or it's site plan review issues, or it's subdivision issues, is, um, what you need to do to, um, get a project through the process smoothly, um, and what you can and you should do along the process to make sure that you're all set. So, you know, some of the things, let's start right at the beginning, and, and again, some of this is germane to every planning board in every town. Um, is, you've, the applicant probably comes in, meets with Jason, or picks up a, an application, and goes through the checklist, um, whether they're seeking a waiver of certain pieces of information that they don't feel they need to submit, or whether they're, um, um, whether you're, they're told you must submit this information. So when you get to go through the checklist, um, and look for, to find out if the application is complete for your purposes, um, if they're requesting waivers, and on one hand you feel that, um, granting the waivers is appropriate, then you go ahead and you grant the waivers, in my estimation, you do that before you find the application complete. The reason being is that if you choose not to grant the waiver, then there's still information that they need to submit to you before you can find that application complete. So, once you get through that part of the process, let's say it's smooth, and they've requested some waivers, and you, you make a motion and you grant the waivers, now you can find the application complete. One of the things that I emphasize to all the boards, um, that I work with on a regular basis, and, and people still get stuck on it, and that's okay, is that if they submit, if, if they're submitting a stormwater plan as part of their application, um, and you go through it and you look at it and you go, well, you know, I think I need more information, that doesn't mean it's not complete. They've submitted what the checklist asked for, stormwater plan. It's during deliberation time that you would say, well, you know, I know you've submitted the stormwater plan, but I feel I need to have additional information so that I can make a, a decision on this. So, there's a difference between what they submitted and have they submitted it versus is it enough for you to make a decision on? Um, we get through that part of your process, and then you're, um, you're looking at the plans and you're deliberating, and, um, asking the applicant questions regarding it, everything's going fine. Um, then you're going to, um, the way I, I like to run the process is, once you find the application complete, and you've deliberated with the applicant, then usually you're going to, um, set a date for a public hearing, and a site walk if you need it, and you'll do that, you'll set those dates, you'll do the site walk, you'll do the, um, public hearing, and then you can, um, go into your deliberation to determine whether or not you want to approve, approve with conditions, or deny an application. Um, in doing that, you have, in your ordinances, um, you, you have to make your findings of fact. Um, do you, Jason, do you, do you prepare those for them, or does the planning board?
Uh, I think the planning board.
Do your own findings of fact?
No, we don't have an executive secretary, so the land use department takes care of that for us.
Okay, okay, so, you should get, um, when I do a project review for someone, I'll do a, a report that describes the project and talks about the waivers and everything, and when we get to that point of you needing to approve the project, you would get a, um, a, a sheet that's filled out with the findings of fact, at least as I see it, and then you can make modifications to that if you need to. But the findings of fact for.
We typically walk through those.
They record. They write them down, and they, they bring the copy back for us to approve.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, it's a group effort, but.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't do it within the, the body of the planning board, like nobody, we don't have an executive secretary, so.
No, we don't write it down, but we absolutely walk through each of the.
So we have a checklist?
Facts we have to decide, the checklist.
So is this, so.
We don't produce a finding of fact.
You show them the checklist? So, do you have a, do you provide?
I don't know, I'm just.
Administratively, they record it, but we walk through to make sure that all the finding fa, of facts have been made. So right there, we walk through that checklist.
You walk through the.
And make the finding.
Performance standards within your ordinance.
Yeah, on the checklist.
Yep. One person reads it, one person says yes or no, and then we discuss why.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, we do that.
Does the applicant get anything in writing?
After the, yeah, yes, they should.
Right.
Right, but that would be.
But that would be the land use.
So, yes, so 6.6.3.4 is your, um, is what you go through for your findings of fact? Perfect, okay. So there, there's that, then your decision, um, this is actually well laid out, I hadn't seen this, so I apologize.
We couldn't, we couldn't come to a decision before we went through a finding of fact?
You, you can, but you really need to make your find, provide your findings of fact the night that you make your decision. Um, because, um, you know, if you make your decision short of going through the findings of fact, then no one knows how you concluded that you made that decision. So there's also, and I'm assuming you do this as well, having quickly trying to, so yes, under 6.6.3.2, your conditions of permit, there's A through E, I'm assuming you, those are also performance standards that you go through as part of your findings of fact in a condition of this permit. Perfect, yep, so, good so far, good so far, you guys are doing, you guys know what you're doing, so.
Let me, let me ask this question, so.
Yep.
Many applicants come with engineering studies or stormwater plans that have been prepared by outside consultants whom the applicant pays.
Yes.
We, me personally, I'll speak for me personally, I'm not an expert in.
Yep.
Is there a snail dodder in that pond or not who's endangered? Um, yet we get opinions paid for by the applicant from experts.
Yep.
Uh, where do we go to get those things verified, or who do we ask? Who, who, for environmental, for, um, some of these other, uh, issues, I frankly think some of these paid consultants are obviously producing, this is my own opinion, and I have no specific example, but, you know, I think it could happen that a paid consulting is creating the answer that the applicant needs to get through the process. How do we verify those?
Well, um, there's a couple of ways to do that. Um, I mean, I'm not a scientist, um, but I do rely on a lot of information from other agencies, there's an agency called Beginning with Habitat, I don't know if you're familiar with that, um, they have a website, uh, they're part of the state, um, and Beginning with Habitat has, um, a lot of information pertaining to wildlife habitat, for example, um, deal wintering yards, um, and I'm, you know, there's other information out there, a lot of it. Um, it's, they have information relevant to vermicool locations, um, that have been verified, they have a lot of information regarding, um, various, um, animals that may be, uh, not extinct, of course, but, um, may be endangered, um, that they have inventory on. The Beginning with Habitat information is very valuable, um, and, and you can just go right on their website and get through that information and find it. Hiring an outside person like myself, for example, you don't have to hire me, I'm not looking for that, we got plenty of work, um, but happy to, happy to help out, but we, um, we don't have any skin in the game, you know, so, um, it's our job to verify that information as best as possible, and sometimes we do rely on the engineers, and engineers put in their stamp on a plan, and they're signing their name, and if they're found to have misrepresented or not done what they're supposed to do, their license is in jeopardy, and they know that.
The main state biologist can answer questions like that if you.
Well, I was going to say, um, the other place to go, depending on questions that you may have or, or may want the applicant to provide letters from, would be Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Um, they, they also look at the Beginning with Habitat information and other data that they have, and they can provide a letter saying, we've reviewed this information and there's nothing there, or there's, there is something there.
How about transportation issues?
Um, transportation issues, uh, again, um, you know, I'm ca, I personally am capable of reviewing that stuff, I'm not an engineer, but, um, I've been in this business for 40 years, and I've done a lot of transportation traffic impact study analysis and whatnot. We also have a transportation division, as I mentioned, in our depart, in, in our, um, operation, and, um, we have rural funds from the Maine DOT that allows us to do that sort of work, and we don't necessarily have to charge the town for it, um, so we can look at some of that information as well. We do also, on occasion, if it's a very complex issue, um, traffic signals involved and timing and, and, um, that sort of thing, we may look to suggest that a third-party engineer do that review, and again, um, I have worked with a number of them, and I know, um, who's not gonna, you know, um, um, kind of manipulate any of that data for the purpose of manipulating the data.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's some very good traffic engineers out there, and there are some that, yeah, I question a little bit, um, just like anybody. And we can also suggest, help you with that, and suggest who you ought to look to for that, for that if you need.
So, I have a question?
Yes.
Um, with regard to this issue?
Yeah.
How do we go about, um, seeking the information from you? Can we call you directly? Is that not allowed as a planning board? We have been told that we're not allowed to do research? Is that, how does that play, play in?
So, that, that's an interesting question, so independently, you can do your own research, um, especially when you're outside the planning board venue, um, um, that kind of gets into ex parte communications, um, don't be communicating with other board members outside, you know, this venue about a project. Um, I can say that if you want to call me as an individual and ask me questions about stuff, um, you can, but, um, there's a but in there, um, you know, rather than having five of you calling me on the same kind of thing, you know, go through Jason, um, or, yeah, so, it just makes, it makes it easier to have conduit of one person, so that, you know, I may not get the same information from you as I'm getting from the next person, and give you two different answers for whatever reason. If you go through your code officer and, um, have him give me a call, um, I can provide whatever direction or information that's needed on, on any of that stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, you know, we, I, I think seeing this and, and knowing, you know, you folks, um, have, um, got a lot of good things here. Excuse me, I had a very dry throat tonight. I do a lot of talking all day. Um, so, I, you know, I think that, that from this standpoint, um, you've got a lot of guidance right in this book, um, that provides you very good opportunities to go through this information and look for, you know, have they provided this, have they not provided this, um, do we need this type of, of thing? Um, I will probably, to some extent, credit my predecessors, SMPDC used to be very involved in Acton, um, before, before I came, not that that made any difference, but I think it's just the whole, you know, change of everybody that has gone on, I know prior to, I started with SMPDC in 2013, um, and, um, prior to that, um, JT Lockman was in my position, and I think he spent a lot of time up, up here, um, previous members of the board and folks, so, um, I'm sure that a lot of, a lot of what's in your ordinance probably came from that work previously and has been handed down. So if the planning board does research, uh, or I do research on, on an applicant or something that we're looking for? Yep. Something was brought up to somebody bef, uh, to me, uh, earlier was, is the information that you're using, does it pertain, does it have to be in-state information, or can it be from, uh, ser, um, anywhere? Well, it depends on the kind of information you're talking about, I mean, if you're researching a person, um, and what their credibility is, you want to be somewhat careful of that, um, because you want to, what you're going, what you need to do as a board is judge every application on its merits, not on who that person is. Um, I think more like just, uh, scientific studies or anything like that, so, um.
Like, I'll say it, mineral extractions, you know, that was a big one that you can find information from out of state more, where it's more prevalent than in the state of Maine.
It is more prevalent, but, but, again, um, as it relates to whether it's that or some other type of, of operation, you need to be using, you can, you can look for outside information, but it really needs to pertain to the state's laws regarding mineral extraction, what the DEP's ordinances and regulations are, um, because theirs are much, much more, um, detailed than yours would be, um, you being you any town would be, so you want to look to the DEP and see what their information says, um, and, again, have myself or, or Jason go through, um, contact the DEP and talk with them. Um, utilizing outside information relevant to outside the state of Maine may not be germane to your situation, and you want to be really careful about that. Um, one of the things, and this is kind of just a question on the fly for you, um, you're still, you still have a, a growth cap here. Mm-hmm. Um, when, do you know when the last time was that it was looked at? Review? Yes. No, I, I don't. Okay. That was put in, I think, the comprehensive, was it in the comprehensive plan? Yeah, and which.
2005.
Yeah. Yeah, um, okay, so, chances are, what I'm reading, what I read here is probably still the situation where it was, um, says, it says in the ordinance, uh, 1998 to 2001.
Could you tell us what page you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, page 77? It's actually starts on 76, it's 5.23. Residential growth ordinance? So just one thing to be careful of, um, and, and that's why I picked up on it when I saw those dates, um, those, those need to be updated on a regular basis for the ordinance to stay legal, so if the ordinance hasn't been updated and the number of, um, permits that you issue, if it needs to change, up or down, um, you know, that's something that could be challenged at some, at some point by somebody, um, so you want to make sure you go back, uh, in the state law and, um.
What is the frequency of change for that in the state law?
I believe it is every three years. Or expired. Before me. So it's just, it's just something you're going to want to either go back and do or, or.
Responsibility of the planning board, or is that the responsibility of the selectmen, which is what we've been told about the comprehensive plan?
Well, again, I don't know you, all of your local ordinances, um.
Typically.
I, I, I don't know if you have, um, bylaws or a charter, um, do you have a charter here, or you're, you don't have a charter here? I have, I.
I think so.
You're asking me questions I don't even.
We have a bylaw, but it's very generic.
Okay, so, so, the, I think the more important question is the charter, and whether, some towns do not have charters, some towns do have charters. If, if the town has a charter, there usually is an explanation of what the responsibilities are of the planning board, what the responsibilities are of the zoning board of appeals, what the responsibilities are of the select board, right down through the whole list. Um, in some towns, uh, developing the comprehensive plan is, um, is a committee that is established by the select board, um, in some towns, it is clearly the responsibility of the planning board. Um, it really depends on, you know, if they're, what the charter says.
I think our states is a sub, it's a committee that's appointed, I don't think it's selectmen.
Well, we've been told it's a select.
A committee to do.
Right, they probably appoint a committee, you know, they should have a, you know, at least one or two planning board members on it, and, you know, a zoning board of appeals member or two, and a select board member, and some general citizens, um, to do that. or two, and a select board member, and some general citizens to do that. And again, every community is different, and it's approached very, very differently. That's the purpose of home rule in the state of Maine.
Somebody should go to Augusta and tell them.
Yes, I understand. And we can talk about-
That'll be- Let's not get, yeah, so-
Yeah, no, not political, but I think there's some things coming up that are going to affect some of that, and we'll certainly talk about that one, so we can get through some of this stuff. Oh, thank you. The other thing I noticed in your ordinance that you may want to take a look at again, I'm not sure what people are considering or thinking, but your zoning, the zoning board of appeals, of course, is a different board, but it is outlined in your ordinance. There are different appeals or added appeals that are now available to people, that do not show up in your ordinance, under state law. So you may want to have that updated at some point.
What do you mean by saying that? You say there's other board of appeals, what do you, thank you.
So there should be a zoning board of appeals-
662.
And the zoning board, you know, your ordinance, your zoning ordinance, and many zoning ordinances, outline the zoning board of appeals, their powers, their duties, their responsibilities, but there are different types of appeals that can be brought to the zoning board of appeals. For example, there is an administrative appeal, where you make a decision, because as the code officer, you have the final say relevant to a lot of zoning issues, so you make, you make a determination on something, if someone disagrees with your determination-
They go to the appeals.
They can go to the appeals board. If someone wants a variance for setbacks for certain situations-
Hardship or anything like that?
Right, well, yes, and they can go to the zoning board of appeals. There's also a handicap accessibility allowance that can go to the zoning board of appeals. There's also variances that can be granted relevant to shoreline zoning, which, there's actually a-